It is six o'clock and I will call the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. We do have a quorum with all members present. And tonight we have Bishop Levi Roberts from the Church of Jesus Christ, Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints Church to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we come before thee this evening to seek thy blessing as we discuss the needs of With County, that we will be guided by thy hand and make decisions in accordance with thy will. We ask thee to bless those that are involved here this evening, that we will be able to communicate our needs and opinions in respect and kindness. We are grateful for our health and safety and being here today and the health and safety of our community, and we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as always, we will start off with citizens' time. I will call you up and you will have three minutes. And the first person we have signed up is Ms. Cheryl Shaver.
Okay, I'm here tonight to plead my case first. I will share my experience with you, then I will have questions as to handling of my situation thus far. The With County Dog Shelter posted a boxer for adoption. I sent a message saying I was interested, then I called the shelter to let them know that I was interested and asked to be sent an application. It was posted to my email at one twenty-nine on the seventeenth. I called to let them know I got it and I would be giving it to them ASAP. They stopped receiving people at 3:00 PM and as I am a in-home business, I had an appointment and was not able to get it to them on the seventeenth. So I sent it on the eighteenth. I was told we were first when I requested the dog, and then again, we were told we were first on the list when we delivered, or my daughter delivered, the next day our application. It is my understanding that a call or text was sent from a boxer rescue requesting the dog. They were not told of my interest. I called on Monday because I realized his date of release, eleven twenty-seven, was Thanksgiving, and I wanted to see if I could come get him before then. That is when I was told the rescue was getting him. Then I called and talked with Mr. Blanchett, who was very rude and condescending. He stated that he had not even seen my application and wanted to even ensure if I would qualify. He also, after I told him that we had had three boxers and the last one was a rescue, and both my children have boxers and we are a boxer-loving family, he then stated that how was he supposed to know I had boxers? I was very offended and continued to tell me that the rescue was going to get the dog. He also stated that I couldn't go by what the employee told me because she was new. Not my problem. I can't help it if she had lack of training. I again repeated to him what we had been told, and I'm just asking him to do the right thing. Also asked him to call the rescue and explain the mistake that had been made and that the dog had already been committed to a local family. He refused. So I called his supervisor, Matt Hankins. He was to call me back. He called me back this morning. Long story short, said if after talking to Mr. Blanchett, he decided to let him make the decision. Then I asked him if he was the supervisor and why couldn't he ask him to at least call the rescue to explain the situation? He said he would and get back to me. I did not hear anything back, so I'm not aware of the conversation. I then called Stephen Baer to explain the situation as I knew it was time-sensitive and time was running out. He said he would look into it and realizing he was in meetings all day, he hadn't had a chance to get back to me. I called Lisa Lester and Tanya Johnson to ask if they would contact in regard to our application, as I put Tanya down as a reference, and I'm good friends and neighbors with Lisa Lester and I know she fosters dogs. Both said they had not been contacted and if needed, they would give a reference as they both know me personally and have known my dogs. As you know, With County Dog Shelter is publicly funded, county-operated facility, and following information must be legal to the public record. Yeah, the refusal to share the name of the rescue as well as the lack of any documentation reason for bypassing the approval of our applications raises serious concerns. One, possible deviation from county adoption policy. Two, lack of transparency in shelter decision-making. Three, failure to follow VA Code two-point-two dash thirty-seven-hundred. Four, possible improper rescue transfer arrangements. Five, potential inconsistent and discriminatory practices. My questions, why haven't they talked to the rescue about this? If money was transferred, which I was made aware that money had been already transferred for them, the dog to be picked up, why not give the money back and explain the mistake that their office had made? Why didn't they give me the name of the rescue as I contacted? I'm respectfully requesting that all action be paused until questions are answered. And I will not accept they filled out applications before me, as I had sent mine in a day later than the rescue, but I had contacted them during the day on Monday and was told the dog was mine, sent the application at one twenty-nine via email to me. It was not in a format that I could send back electronically. They closed at three to the public. And with the timing of receiving the email, I'll tell you that, and being told we were first, and then when we delivered the application, we were again told we're first on the list. And I would have never known that we weren't going to get the dog had I not called Monday because the twenty-seventh being Thanksgiving, I was calling to see if we could get the dog earlier. So, thank you for your time, consideration of this matter. We truly want this dog and we can give him a loving home. I also have neighbors Mitch and Mary Lee Anders and Kathy Caldwell, who also can attest to our character and treatment of animals.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Shaver, and I'm sure Mr. Baer, if you'll follow up with her and let us know the outcome of that.
Thank you.
All right, that's all the citizens we have signed up for citizens' time, so I will close citizens' time. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing vacating a right-of-way. And for the record, I will read the notice of public hearing in compliance with section fifteen-point-two dash twenty-two oh four of the Code of Virginia and amendments thereto. The With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance to discontinue and vacate a right-of-way or street entitled. An ordinance discontinue and vacating a portion of twelve-foot-wide private alleyway through lots fifteen to twenty and thirty-five to forty of the Ivanhoe subdivision located in Lead Mines Magistral District, With County, Virginia. The public hearing will take place on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at 6:00 PM in the boardroom located at three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. Comments may be submitted in person at the meeting via email to Martha Collins, clerk at, and I'm not going to mention her email so she won't get spammed, or by mail at two ninety South Sixth Street, Suite three fifty, Withfield, Virginia. A copy of the proposed ordinance is available for public review at the County Administration Office, two ninety South Sixth Street, Suite three fifty, Withfield, Virginia. With that being said, I will open the public comment period of the public hearing, and we have one person signed up, Ron.
Baludis.
Baludis.
Yes, sir.
Come on up, sir.
Thank you.
And per our rules, you will have five minutes, sir.
I don't think I'll need that, sir, but thank you. My name is Ron Baludis. My wife and I have just bought the property just about two months ago now. At the closing, we were handed a map that showed that we had an undeveloped right-of-way. It goes right across to our septic field and our septic tank. So we would like the right-of-way discontinued. It hasn't been developed from what I could understand about twenty years. The property that is next to us that the right-of-way may have gone to has hundreds of foot of access both along Route ninety-four and along the road behind it, Painters Hill, so there's no restrictive access to it. It just jumps across to our property and we'd like it removed if possible. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'll close the public comment period. And this was recommended by the Planning Commission. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that?
No, sir.
Mr. Baer, you have anything to add?
No, sir. I wish there was an easy way to just get rid of a whole lot of these old alleyways as you see on your plat on page, I don't know, eleven, twelve, or thirteen, twelve of your agenda. There are lots of these out there. There are no public utilities or anything. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinance, Mr. Chairman.
And not that it has a bearing, but was this the John Walt property?
Yes, sir.
I will tell you that I can't believe that Mr. Walt didn't discover this before he passed away. Congratulations and welcome to With County. He was a tremendous man that worked in the nine-one-one system, I guess before his nine-one-one.
Heard a lot about him, but we've never met him.
Yeah, he was, well, I have, and just take care of his house because he'll haunt you. He was very particular.
Well, he won't haunt us.
And anybody that watches this, anybody that watches the meeting that knew John will be like, yeah, they better do a good job because he was very.
It shows.
He was perfection with everything he did. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to vacate that right-of-way.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second. Second. Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any more questions and our discussion on the motion? All right, here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett, we'll start with you, sir.
Aye.
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 So approved, and you got more to mow. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right, moving on to agenda, we've got the payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board package a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or any invoice that any board member wants to pull out? All right, here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, we'll start with you, sir.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we've got the minutes of our previous meeting from November the twelfth, twenty twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? All right, here and then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Anything under old business, Mr. Baer?
I do not have anything, sir.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to new business. We've got the consent counter that again, each board member has received in their package, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent counter.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook, a second by Mr. Terry.
Yes, sir.
Is there any questions or discussion on that? Right, here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, under old business, we've got an abstract of votes. We've got Mr. Lennon Counts, registrar. Come on up, Mr. Counts.
All right. Thank you all. Just wanted to give you a little bit of a brief update on this past election. Overall, things went fairly smoothly. I tried to stay out of the way of things, but we utilized forty-three officers of election for this past election. Like a big thanks to Building and Grounds, Clerk of Court, and most importantly, to Linda in our office for making sure everything went smoothly for this election. She was definitely a big help. We additionally worked with the IT Department and the Sheriff's Office. Turnout for this election was around fifty-one percent. We had eleven thousand and ninety-one ballots cast, slightly down by about five hundred from the twenty-twenty-one governor's race. With that, out of the eleven thousand ballots cast, we had three thousand one hundred and twenty-two ballots that were cast during early voting in our office. So we still, you know, see a significant increase with that compared to the previous gubernatorial race. And even with last year's, I mean, we were down by about two thousand, but that was still quite a few folks that came in. Additionally, we had five hundred and forty-seven voters vote by mail for this election, and the total cost of this election was somewhere around twenty-six thousand dollars. So.
And how much does the state reimburse us?
Just as a reminder for the public, that would be zero dollars. But I'm glad that you asked that question, so.
I've learned a few things.
Yeah. We've really enjoyed having this space. It's worked out very well for us, so I do just want to.
I have received multiple compliments, which is very odd when you sit up here about our space over here on Franklin Street in early voting and how easy it is. I don't think anybody else has heard it, but the ability to find a parking spot.
Yeah.
Is number one, and then the handicap accessibility is probably number two of what I've heard.
Yeah, it's really worked out very well for us, so we're really appreciative of that. Also, I'd also like to thank you all for the storage cages that we did purchase earlier in the year. They've worked really well at our precincts. It makes the delivery and the pickup a whole lot easier. It also does increase security because everything is able to be locked away in a second device, so that helps. We'd like to have more, but unfortunately, some of the buildings just don't have wide enough doors. I'll keep measuring those doors, and when they get wider, I might be coming back and making another request, but until then, so.
Question, I don't know if you know the answer, but you know, you talk about, and it was a governor's race, which is usually a pretty good turnout.
Yeah.
You talk about we only had fifty-one percent.
Yeah.
What's other counties in southwest Virginia? Because to me, you would think with a governor's race, you would be bumping in the seventies.
I know. Well, and you know, of course, twenty-twenty-one was my first governor's race, and twenty-twenty-one was actually the first pretty high turnout governor's race that we had had in a while. I think before that, usually the average was around forty-five percent. For this election, I haven't really looked at the turnout down here in this area. I believe it was down all across southwest Virginia. I don't know if it was a significant amount, but I do believe that it was down overall. So, like I said, we were down here by about five hundred or so voters compared to twenty-twenty-one, so. But going back to that, it's funny, I always calculate things in my head, calculate things related to voting and all of that, and this year, I did the math on how many available hours. You know, you always think about forty-five days of early voting, but then if you do the math, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-six hours that we're open for voting. So I mean, when you look at it that way, that gives voters two-hundred-and-fifty-six extra hours other than Election Day to come in and vote. So it's really, and it's crazy to think that, you know, you have so much, so many options now that, you know, and that's been the odd thing with early voting, and that's what I've kind of told some folks when they've come in. We've seen more folks come in and vote early, but it still hasn't really increased the turnout overall, which is, you know, like I said, every year, you see more and more people coming into our office and voting, but it doesn't increase the overall turnout, which is interesting to me, so.
Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Count?
I was just going to say, you've got to love when people write themselves in to vote for themselves to make sure the process is secure. And Mr. Hankins must have done for the Lead Mines School Board.
I was going to say, I feel targeted, mainly because my EMS chief also received a write-in vote, and he's not here tonight.
He wanted to make sure his vote was counted. I know him.
Luckily, we were pretty early on in the list for going down the write-ins, and I saw Mr. Hankins's name and Mr. Frazier's name, and so when he come walking by, I was like, you've already got one vote so far, so you better be careful. And that was really interesting, too. Typically, as we've had in previous races where we've had no one file to run, we usually have several write-in candidates. This was our first time that we've really had one write-in candidate get all of the votes. Looking at those, at the certification, I don't know if you see on there, but Coy McRoberts could have won it with four votes. I mean, so it was very interesting looking at the substantial difference there, so.
And I appreciate Ms. Lawson's comment and your follow-up, and I just, I want to get this on the record, because every time, I do fairly well in the race for Congress. And I appreciate it, but do not write me in for Congress. I'm not going to DC. I have no desire to go to, I don't even want to go to Richmond. I just want to go home. So, you know, and Mr. Counts, you know, he sees him, you know, I do all right.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, vote for Morgan, whoever, just don't write my name down.
Yeah.
Because it's getting to the point now where I'm, you know, no.
Yeah, it's interesting.
But at the same time, I appreciate it.
Yeah. So, but yeah, like I said, that was kind of interesting because there really wasn't a second-place person that would have gotten a hundred votes or something, so you really got down to.
Well, we'll give it to Matt.
If the winner would have.
From himself.
Yeah, if the winner would have declined, then you could have potentially had somebody that only got five votes or something, so that's kind of wild.
But, you know, as I wind up the meetings and I'm being honest, if Matt was on the school board, Mr. Baer would have a stroke. As expensive as education is, and as much as Mr. Hankins likes to spend money, I just don't see that working out for anybody.
Fire trucks would have lights and sirens on them, I mean, the school buses would have lights and sirens.
All right, so anybody else got anything for Lennon?
Thank you, Lennon.
And I will say before you leave, we appreciate our electoral officials. And speaking of electoral boards, our electoral official, Ms. Castle, Mary, and nobody knows who Mary is, so Sis Castle, I heard she had a fall, so everybody keep her in your prayers and if she's very strong and she'll probably be running the five K that we were talking about before the meeting started, before I will, so if anybody can.
And speaking to that, too, I did have one note on the bottom, and I'll reach out to Mr. Sayers about this, but we, not related to Ms. Castle's fall, but it was brought up by her. We, I'll speak, I'm going to reach out to Mr. Sayers about some better lighting outside of our office. We do have lights that light up the sidewalk, but it is really dark out there on the street, and when our officers bring everything in at night, it's a little tough out there, so.
I would reach out to Dr. Poole because these stadium lights, they put on a light show.
We might be able to get an extra light, yeah, that's true.
I mean, you know, if it, a little red, white, and blue on election night.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, I think the neighbors appreciate.
That was exactly what went through my head when you said the stadium lights. I was thinking we could do a red, white, and blue light show.
I wasn't going to say black and orange. But, and I will, and all joking aside, Mr. Hankins has sent out, or we're working on capital improvement projects, or the county's working on capital improvement projects for other people besides Min Lawson, Min Miss Lawson to look at next year, and it is a little dark over there.
Yeah, and there's no street lighting. If there was street lighting, it would probably be fine, but it's something that we've ran across, especially in November, June, it's still daylight when they bring everything back, but, so November makes it a little tough out there, so. And we just want to make sure that they're getting done with their day and getting everything in, okay, so.
All right, so anybody else got anything for Lennon?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
All right, next, we've got a With County extension update. Mr. Henderson?
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity. Good to be here. Just want to give a brief overview of the growing season we had this year in agriculture for With County. You know, it started off great. We had good first cutting of hay. Many producers had experienced excellent silage yields, and then, as you know, we turned it off dry this fall and had reduced second cutting and limited grazing and early hay feeding. But on the plus side, we've enjoyed record cattle prices, some of the highest prices we've ever seen. But there is currently a little bit of instability and the markets are trending down, but we hope for them to recover beginning of the year. With that, just wanted to thank you all for some of the programs that you support at the Quabrick Extension Office, one of those being the invasive plant control program. We do that in the spring of the year, as you know, and this year, we had seventy-three applicants that applied and received cost share, and they were able to use that to buy herbicides to control invasive weeds on their properties, and based on their estimates, they controlled invasive weeds on four thousand acres. So we appreciate that support. The last two months, our office has been working hard with producers to help them apply for the Virginia Farm Recovery Block Grant Program. This was a program where Virginia received sixty-point-nine million dollars to provide direct aid to eligible producers. Those eligible losses covered losses on the farms that weren't covered by other federal or state programs, and included on-farm building structures, farm roads, bridges, and culverts, above-ground irrigation, aquaculture, aquaculture, infrastructure, economic loss for perennial crops, market loss for crops, plastic culture, and timber. This was only an online application, and to be honest, it's a very lengthy application. For the ones that I helped with, it took me about one and a half to two hours per applicant to fill it out. So we reached out and tried to help all those that needed help. I personally, our office worked with nineteen producers to fill out that application, and we had a total of twenty-five producers from With County apply. A lot of applications included bridge, roads, some farm buildings, had a few market laws, and some timber applications. With that, I just want to thank you for your support of our extension office and for our agricultural community, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions for Ethan?
No questions, just thanks again for everything you always do.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to staff reports. Deputy County Administrator, Mr. Hankins. And I was just kidding about you spending money, so don't be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the interest of keeping you and Ms. Lawson on the board just that much longer, this is a lengthy report tonight. As you indicated, I have sent out a draft capital improvement plan for your review. If you've not had the chance to look at that, I'd appreciate your feedback. We need to get that in front of the Planning Commission so they can make a recommendation to you. There's a lot of stuff on there. I threw a bunch on there to see whether it'll stick, so if you want to tell me that something's not going to stick, you know, this is the time to do it, so.
We absolutely expected that. Min Miss Lawson liked everything you put on there.
Mm-hmm. Looks good.
As far as grants go, do have a couple of things to mention tonight. One is Cart Team Grant. The State Animal Response Team is winding down its operations, and so they're dispersing the remainder of their funds to the active citizen animal response teams out in the state. We're one of a handful still that operate a citizen animal response team, so they're sending us a portion of their remaining funds, two-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. I would ask that you appropriate that to thirty-two oh four dash four-six-one-one oh four of Cart Team supplies and training.
All right. You've heard the request. I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Second. Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Right, here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Thank you. The second one is not on your written report. It just came in at five-thirty-four. We get an annual grant every year, the litter prevention and recycling program, and the extended polystyrene. and the extended polystyrene campaign. Get those funds from the state. They've awarded $13,551.22 in the non-competitive grant, and $2,561.07 in the expanded polystyrene campaign. Would ask that you authorize staff to accept those funds.
Right, again, you've heard the request from Mr. Hankins. I'll entertain a motion to accept the grant. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
The next item is a procurement item. You've budgeted funds for the Baron Springs fire truck. We've signed the initial order. As they have gone through doing their final checklist, there were a few things that they wanted to add, primarily from a safety and plumbing standpoint. They did reduce the water capacity so they can put some additional tools on that truck. It still meets the minimum standards to be a pumper tanker at 1,250 gallons. They propose paying for the remaining, or the difference in what we committed to pay versus the truck's final cost out of their ATL, the Assistance Locality Funds. So I request authorization from the board to proceed with the change order that was included in your packet.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to authorize that. So we'll have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or discussion on that one? Right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Met this afternoon with Citizens Co-op as part of their monthly call with the Planning District Commission to update us on their East End Broadband Project. They have obtained nearly all of the permits required on the public roads. There's one road that they have left to get their permit on, but they don't anticipate any issues from VDOT on that. There are some private roads that they don't yet have access easements for, and so they'll be visiting property owners and trying to identify getting along some of the private roads for the easements that they need, because they do direct bury their conduit and their fiber. They don't go on the poles the same way that the company on the West End does. They do have crews working in the area. Specifically, they've been working on Sanders Mines, Austenville, and several different roads on Baron Springs. They do expect to finish the fiber optic cable installation in the Baron Springs area around the first of the year. So they are working pretty hard on getting that area done. They do have additional crews that they're starting Monday, and then additional crews that start the following week to try to speed up the rollout of the fiber in those areas. We're going to work with citizens to publicize the locations where the crews are working so we can improve vehicular safety and worker safety in those areas where they're working. That'll also help residents recognize when they've got the fiber available in their neighborhoods, and so they can go ahead and, if they want to apply for the service, they'll be able to go ahead and figure out if it can be served at their address. They have received an extension on this project from the Department of Housing and Community Development. This project, had it been completed by Point Broadband, would have faced the deadline of this Friday to wrap everything up. DHCD has approved a deadline extension to June 30th, 2026, but has indicated there will not be another extension on this project. So everything that they are trying to do has to be wrapped up by June 30th. So we hope that almost all of those residents who were promised that they would get service through this grant award, that they'll actually have that service by the end of June next year. And I know that's longer than folks were hoping for or expected based on what we'd been told and shared from the previous applicant. But, you know, we hope that they will follow through, and so far, it seems like they are. I've actually, you know, passed by them on Austenville Road, working on a regular basis over the last couple of weeks, and they're making steady progress rolling that fiber out. Additionally, they do have some funding for a program to put some community hotspots in the area that they're going to be serving. So if Mr. Burnett, Mr. Smith, or Mr. Morgan have suggestions, Mr. Terry, if you've got suggestions for areas on the East End that could benefit from that community hotspot, please let me know. It does have to be a for-profit business. They indicated it can't be a club, church, might not be able to do schools. So they're at least asking for an initial run of where would you like to see those hotspots be located? These would be free access Wi-Fi service points for the eastern end of the county. And then they are going to Richmond next week. They're going to get details on the Federal BEAT Award. That is the broadband extension that was passed as part of the Infrastructure and Jobs Act. So there has been an approval of a federal award. They'll get more details on that last, next week. That's to help close the gap. So the things that don't get done in this project, whether it's because of long driveways or lack of right-of-way or some other issues, if they can't get service as part of this grant, they're going to try to fill those in with the BEAT Award. So they are continuing to make progress. Planning Commission is reporting and following up as they're supposed to do. So any questions on the broadband?
No, I would, I would check, though, to see if they can do the schools, because I know that they put the hotspot at the schools during COVID.
It helped.
Yeah, it does help, helps students.
The, the only issue with that is the Code of Virginia and trespassing on school property after dark.
Yeah, true. I didn't think about that.
And I don't think we can override the code. So it, while it sounds good.
Yeah, I didn't think about that aspect of it.
I'm afraid you're just inviting trouble on that. Our cemeteries, which I assume they don't want to put a hotspot in a cemetery. I'm just talking about how the code reads, but.
Did have one more thing I wanted to mention. Met with the Regional Improvement Commission last week. You all may have seen some media coverage. I know the chairman has about, apparently Bristol wants to keep more of the gaming tax proceeds for itself. The Bristol City Manager indicated that they have not requested legislation. Legislation has not been drawn up, but they would like to see a larger share because of the increased costs that they face. He cited particularly the tripling of their inmate population, which is in large part directly attributable to having a casino in your community. Understand that, but the Code of Virginia says it's an equal share. We are meeting again on December 10th. At that point, I may bring back a recommendation to you that we be prepared to contribute some funds toward a lobbyist to help prevent action on that, because it's a substantial commitment from the state that we're going to get that, you know, $1.1 to $1.3 million next year for public safety, transportation, or education. Of course, you've allocated all those funds toward public safety and being able to provide emergency medical services and fire services to our communities. We'd like to keep the program as it is by and large. So we're going to meet again on the 10th, see if there's any more reasonable resolution than getting the General Assembly involved in this, and I'll bring that report back to you either in writing or at your December 23rd meeting.
Just to clarify, when this proposal was presented to the voters to authorize this casino, it was under the current agreement?
With the understanding that that's how the legislation was going to be submitted?
And at the time, the city of Bristol, who was pretty close to going bankrupt, didn't have a problem with it. With that being said, and I won't get on the soapbox, I have reached out to delegate-elect Cornet, who has assured me that he will not vote to change the agreement that was agreed to by the voters of southwest Virginia. But you just bring it back December the 23rd. That will be a prime meeting to bring that back. Because quit selling stuff to the voters and then flip-flopping. And I don't care if it's a state election or a local election, quit doing it. Because I'm reading your, your report, and I know I promised I wouldn't get on the soapbox, I'll wrap it up real quick. And our paid emergency services has a plan for holiday staffing for Thanksgiving. So all the people on 77 and 81 that can't drive, that tie up our ambulances, y'all have a plan when grandma has chest pains, and I appreciate that.
And I would argue that we are in a similar situation to Bristol, that we have a lot of folks from outside of our community who depend on services while they are here and passing through, and that we incur extra costs that are covered by the same funds that they get from the gaming tax proceeds, so.
I'll just wrap it up, but you definitely bring it back on 23rd. Just give me a heads up.
You'll have almost two weeks, Ms. Chairman. You did point out that we are doing some emergency services staffing. So some of us who don't ordinarily ride a fire truck or staff an ambulance will be out working tomorrow. I'd rather be prepared for the worst than not be prepared and have to come up with a plan on the fly. So Chief Parnell, Chief Frazier, all of our staff that are working tomorrow, they've done a very good job of working on this plan, coming up with what we're going to do. The town of Withel is also staffing up, so, you know, we anticipate that we'll have about as good of an emergency response as we can tomorrow, barring another cookie fire.
All right, anything else, sir?
Not tonight, no, sir.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? All right, we'll move on to County Administrator Report. Mr. Bear, and don't get my blood pressure up, he's done a.
It's the week before Thanksgiving. I was trying to keep mine short and sweet and keep going. First item tonight is the SVC wastewater pretreatment permit. The, this went before the Water Committee, but due to a conflict of interest, needed to bring it to the full board, so couldn't get a recommendation out of committee. Water Committee, you've got some recommendations of other permits, but basically, we have pretreatment permits with six industries and businesses in With County that are required to do certain pretreatments to their wastewater product before it enters into our wastewater stream. Would request that the board approve the permit for, pretreatment permit for SVC wastewater for a period of one year to December 31st, 2026. The other ones, you will see, we've got a five-year timeframe on them. We would like to enter into some negotiations with the SVC. It just makes certain that they want to keep the same volume that they have, that they're currently using about 300,000 gallons per day, and they are permitted for up to 600,000 gallons per day. Just want to make certain that they need to keep that for future expansion or use, and if they don't, maybe they can release that. And that gives us additional capacity when we're dealing with other companies that we can say we've got this much capacity at our wastewater treatment plant. So I would request the approval of the SVV, SVC wastewater pretreatment permit until December 31st, 26.
All right, boards, you've heard the request. I'll entertain a motion to approve that request. So move. Have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 I'll abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so approved.
Next is Corbridge, which is our old Valik 457 account. They have some amendment to our agreement to be in compliance with the CARES and SECURES Act. I would request you all approve the amendments on our plan agreement.
Again, boards, you've heard the request. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion by Mr. Morgan, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Right, here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved.
Next, Horace Mann, as you all know, started on our flexible spending account and health savings account. They did come in and start having meetings with all the employees and going around, been impressed with their interaction with everyone. We need to enter into an administrative services agreement with them. I request that you all approve this agreement.
All right, entertain a motion to approve that request.
So they've.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion on that one? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Others, just informational items about a bond that's been paid off. I've also mentioned Ms. Woods received a copy of our draft audit today. We, we've got a couple of questions. We've got to get back in touch. We'll talk about the Budget Committee next week. Due to the federal shutdown, they don't have some information that they need for the audit. I'll have to talk to Diane a little bit about that to determine whether they go ahead and do a draft audit now, and then we'll have to get the final audit later, or whether we proceed with what we have. But they, right now, everything looks good. Opinion's unmodified, so it looks like everything's okay. But just, we are going through that, and it looks good for this year.
All right, anything else, Mr. Bear?
I do not have anything, sir.
All right, County Attorney, Mr. Farthing.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I don't have anything to report at this time.
All right, thank you, sir. Move on to board reports. We've got a Water Committee report.
The Water Committee met on November 18th, 2025, and made the following recommendations. Approve the following pretreatment permits. Non-manufacturing permits, Spico, Pilot, and Blue Beacon. Industrial permits, Somic, Amcor.
All right, committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, we'll start with you, sir.
Aye.
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 So approved.
And that was all the Water Committee had.
All right, we'll move on to Economic Development Committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Economic Development Committee met on November 18th, 2025, and makes the following recommendations. Number one, authorizing the county administrator to execute agreement to extend the Progress Park ag land lease with G&amp;G Livestock for an additional five years as allowed by the original agreement.
Okay, again, committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Second item, Mr. Chairman, approving the With Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement and Governor's Agriculture and Forestry Industries Development Fund Performance Agreement for the Duchess Dairy Products Expansion Project. Staff requests include amendment and appropriation of $19,000 to the With JIDA incentive payments
All right, again, committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion on that one? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
And that's all from the Economic Development Committee, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move on to Board of Supervisors time. Mr. Terry, since you've got the microphone, sir, we'll start with you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two special guests I want to introduce, but first, I want to share a little background about them. The world of martial arts is a realm of discipline, respect, and extraordinary skill. They have shown unwavering commitment, countless hours of training, and overcoming immense challenges to reach the pinnacle of their support. Their journeys are testaments to the true spirit of warriors of martial arts, inspiring countless individuals both locally, regionally, nationally, and through the globe. They are both students of Shanaka Martial Arts and have been trained by founder and 10th degree Black Belt Grandmaster Penny Shannon, and 9th degree Black Belt Grandmasters and current studio owners Scott and Shana Shannon. Tonight, we have two world champions from With County here in attendance with us, Christina Latham and Lane Webb. Lane started his martial arts journey in the after-school program at Shanaka Martial Arts when he was in kindergarten at Spiller Elementary School. Over the last 10 years, Lane has grown into an avid competitor in the martial arts arenas. He has acquired multiple national titles, as well as competed in the US Open and Battle of Atlanta Martial Arts tournaments over the past couple of years as well. Lane has won multiple divisions where he's competed against his peers and friends. He has become a staple in the after-school and summer programs at Shanaka Martial Arts, helping to mold and guide our local youth in martial arts, as well as being a mentor to them through respect and kindness. Lane has been inducted into the, been inducted multiple times to the United States Martial Arts Hall of Fame Association, and for the upcoming 2026 Hall of Fame, Lane has been nominated for an All-Around Competitor of the Year. Christina Latham, who's Lane's mother, has always been his biggest supporter and advocate. Her personal journey in the martial arts has helped her achieve the best possible self. Her personal journey in the martial arts has helped her achieve the best possible self, her best possible self. Since starting martial arts, Christina's lost a total of 140 pounds and has gained four national titles in her age and her ranked divisions. Christina owns her virtual counseling therapy practices and sees patients all over the state of Virginia and the state of Florida. She represents With County on the Mount Rogers Community Services Board, where she was recently nominated to serve as a treasurer starting in January of 26. This year, Christina, the year Christina started her martial arts journey, she was introduced into the United States Martial Arts Hall of Fame Association for the Parent of the Year. For this upcoming 2026 Hall of Fame, Christina's been nominated for forms competitor of the year for 2025. The mother, this particular mother and son, along with their family, went to Oslo, Norway at the beginning in the first week of November to compete in the World Martial Arts Game. The two were picked up back in the summer by the United States Team USA Martial Arts Team. Between the two of them, they come back home and to the United States with, in the top three in 12 different divisions. And their accolades are as follows. Lane competes in the Black Belt Division, 14 to 15-year-old. He come home with a gold world championship in musical forms, a gold world championship in creative forms, a gold world championship in the team's foreign, in which Team USA beat Great Britain 25 to 6. He come away with a world runner-up silver in Japanese traditional forms, a world runner-up silver in Japanese bladed weapons, a bronze medal in creative weapons, and a bronze medal in Japanese wood weapons. Christina competed in intermediate belt level competition. She come home with a gold world championship in traditional forms in 40-plus and intermediate, a gold world championship creative weapons in 40-plus intermediate, a runner-up silver world champion in traditional weapons 40-plus intermediate, a runner-up silver in creative musical forms 40-plus intermediate. And then her last, she collected a gold, or silver, I'm sorry, in creative musical weapons in 40-plus, but she stepped up in the Black Belt Division for that competition. And so on behalf of With County, congratulations, Lane and Christina. Would you please stand to be recognized?
That's awesome. Congratulations.
And that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman, other than happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you, sir.
You know, each board member gets five minutes for board time, and that was well-presented for world champions. But Christina and Lane, if y'all'd like to come up here and demonstrate on Mr. Terry, I'd yield my five minutes. And, and, and that's just, and that's just from this seat? I mean, y'all might end up with about 20 minutes.
That's probably like a six to one, buddy.
You see what I did to him? Turned back, talked him into...
But, but in all seriousness, congratulations and, and, congratulations on your achievements, but also thank you for, for representing With County. So congratulations. And with that being said, I'll shut up.
You guys would like to see some of the hardware we brought back?
Do you have it with you? Yeah.
I mean, again, I'll yield my time and hold the hardware. I'd like to see a little of that freestyle on Mr. Terry.
They're free. You guys can stand back and look at that.
No, come on up. And I, and I was actually going to say that before I tried to get you to beat up Stacy, but you need to get up here so you can get recognized.
Now, with the weight regulations, we actually had to slip these up among our bags.
I'll give it right now. It was a good thing.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Hey, buddy, how are you? Congratulations.
That's pretty awesome.
And, and Lane, just for the record, and I will absolutely not ask your mother this, but how old are you?
I'm 15, sir.
Really cool.
Congratulations.
I think I gave you some, like, trap muscles.
Yes.
But thank you guys so very much.
Thank you, and congratulations again.
Thank you so very much.
How was Norway?
It was very awesome. The week before, like, the last week of October, when it was, like, dreary and rainy, basically was a precursor for when we went over there. It was the same, about 40 degrees.
How long did it take y'all to drive there?
Well, driving me crazy.
Because I, you know, I'm just, I tell them, if it involves a plane, I'm out.
Well, that was about seven and a half hours.
Oh, no, 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 no.
With the three of them, and then another two and a half hours. So, yeah.
So, well, thank y'all.
Thank you guys so very much.
All right, Mr. Morgan, top that.
Yeah.
I just, the only thing I have, Mr. Bear, is where do we stand with the flood repair work down at Speedwood?
The RFP, I believe, has gone out for that, for the engineering services. And Mr. Kinsler has copied various engineering firms as well to let them know that they're interested. And that'll be the first step. We'll meet with, once we select a firm, then we meet with the state agencies that are seeing that, review all that, and go forward with the design plans.
Thank you. That's all I have, other than happy Thanksgiving.
All right, move on to the gentleman wearing retreat, I mean, Mr. Smith.
I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels if you're traveling on the road. And again, congrats to all the success, and thank you for representing With County.
Mr. Smith, you do have one more thing, and I, because I failed to put it in my report, but Monday night, last Thursday night, Wednesday night, we went to the open house of the...
Fort Chisel Library.
Yeah, so the Fort Chisel Library is open. They had an open house last week, well-attended, good cupcakes and food there in the process. But they're up and running, and they told us that as of Monday of last week, the, the building is in the Friends of the Fort Chisel Library name. They still indicated they owe about $300,000 on that building, so just because library's open, the fundraising is not. The Friends of the Fort Chisel Library still need support from the community in continuing to, to fundraise and help them pay for, for the debt service on that library.
So, Lane, and you can just make that check out, and I'll deliver.
All right, Mr. Cook.
I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and congratulations, about all I got.
All right, three meetings left. Ms. Lawson?
Yes. Regarding Ms. Shaver and the dog incident, I talked to her earlier. I also talked to Mr. Hankins without getting in the weeds of everything, because I do understand she was not first in line for the dog. But without getting into all the details, is there a way that we can give her the information for the rescue if we're allowed to? Because maybe she could work with the rescue at that point to rescue the boxer from them.
I believe Mr. Bear's already provided that. If not, we'll...
Yeah, I have not had a chance to call her yet, but as she said, I talked to Ms. Hankins this afternoon. I think we can, we can do some follow-up tomorrow between the rescue and her and others and see what we can get worked out there.
I know it's a sticky situation, but I thought maybe if the dog's just going to be sent off somewhere, put in foster, someone else is going to rescue it, you know? So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Burnett?
I have a few items. I had a resident at 354 Sheffield School Road ask me if the dead trees was in the state I had a request to look at Route 94 in Ivanhoe to see if the 35 mile an hour speed could be backed up to the firehouse and Olive Branch Road to see if that would be a good six-year plan. And then, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Burnett. And that's a good lead-in. I've got a few things. The first thing, and, and I'll follow up with what Mr. Burnett said about VDOC. And I've just learned that, well, let me back up. The last meeting, I brought up the pothole there at Exit 67, and there's actually several on Wesley Highway. And, you know, VDOC got in there, fixed it, you know, done a good job. And, and I recently learned that there, there's a VDOC employee, local VDOC employee that, that watches the board meetings just to see if there are VDOC concerns brought up during the meeting. And, you know, that got me to thinking, we've got a really good relationship with VDOC and With County, with our local VDOC. Mr. Schwartz, all the employees, they live here, they travel the roads, they see stuff. And I don't think every county can say that. Now, speed studies and stuff like that, when it goes to Salem or Bristol, you know, that's a different story, and God forbid it goes to Richmond. But, you know, our local VDOC people, they do a really good job, and I just want to say, you know, we appreciate that. Next, I, I received a really nice thank you card from Zach Cooley for putting the flag at half-staff when, when Herb Cooley died, the former chief deputy, and, and he talked about, you know, I don't know that it's ever been done before, and me and Mr. Bear talked about it, and, and Zach talked about, said we can call it Herb Cooley ordinance. But, you know, looking back on my eight years on the board, we've seen a lot of death up here, unfortunately. You know, former board members, you know, former outstanding citizens, you know, in the county. And, and I don't know that we needed ordinance, but just something for, for you folks to think about coming in January, when you talk about the rules and procedures. You know, I pulled the gun as chairman and said, you know, let's lower it. I don't know if that's something that needs to be put in the rules and procedure discussed. I'll leave that up to you guys, because I'm not going to be here. But, you know, it really did, and, and there's the, the thank you card, if you want to read it from Zach. It really did mean a lot to him and the family. And unfortunately, none of us are getting any younger, except for me.
Mr. Chairman, if I might on that. And I, I appreciate Mr. Cooley asking that, because it's something I never thought about. And Ms. Williams, who's always ahead of the curve on everything, had already pulled some information on some policies. And I do think it would be good for us to just present a policy to the board to adopt for former board members and former employees that the board can, or chairman can decree that the flag be lowered for that. So we will, we'll work...
I mean, 70 years from now, when I pass, you know, I'm sure it would mean a lot.
70.
I hope.
I want to get that on the record. But anyway, and then I wanted to thank our EMS Personnel Emergency Services. They had the processional for the corrections officer that was slain over in Grayson County that came through With County and, and our, our paid EMS and some of our volunteer fire departments, they come out and showed their support, along with Chief Slint from Withfield with the, with the joint-on ladder truck and the flag, along with one of the complete tow and a pair at Exit 86. It was, it was a nice display, and I just want to say thank you, and have a good Thanksgiving. And to, going back to the world championship, to, you know, Stacy talked about the young lady that lost all the weight, and me and Jamie both have lost a lot of weight. We ain't won no world championships, son. We're going to have to step our game up, I guess.
I can't, I can't keep competing with those folks.
Nah, I ain't a fighter. I, I shoot people. Now, with that being said, is there anything else to come before the board?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Farthing?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Collins? Nothing else before the board? We'll be adjourned.